Good morning, members. The fifth special meeting of the Finance Committee is called to order. For this session, it's from nine thirty to eleven fifteen. There are two sessions this morning. The purpose of the Finance Special Meetings of the Finance Committee is to consider the estimates of the government in twenty fourteen fifteen. This is to ensure that funding allocations for twenty fourteen to the government would not exceed that is required under the relevant policy areas. Now, please press the button and then I'll arrange for you to speak in due course. I would like to remind members that all questions must be directly related to the estimates. If you wish to follow up on a written reply, please quote the reply serial number on the top right-hand corner. For example, for this session, it would be something like THB bracket HOO, and then the number. Now, to ensure the smooth conduct of the proceedings, members and officials could refer to the index on your computer and then you could find the reference written reply. And then the relevant reply number would also be put on the projection screen. If there is not enough time, members may ask supplemental questions or follow up at the relevant panels. First of all, I would like to welcome the Secretary for Transport and Housing and his team to this session and answer members' questions on housing. On transport, that will be the next session. So first of all, I would invite the Secretary to make some brief opening remarks before we open the floor to questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the new financial year, the government has three major areas of work relating to housing. The first one, formulating the government's long-term housing strategy for the next ten years. We will make reference to the consultation document issued by the LTHS during committee last September and its public consultation reports submitted this February, as well as various views collected by the community to formulate the LTHS. We will also follow up on major housing issues which the community is concerned about, including issues relating to subdivided units, SDUs. On the issue of whether the government should regulate SDUs by way of licensing, there are diverse views in the community. The government has to study the feasibility of this proposal comprehensively before coming to a decision. Moreover, it has been the government's view that increasing the supply of public rental housing, PRH, is the ultimate solution to addressing the housing needs of the inadequately housed families. We understand that the community is concerned about the high rental of private residential housing and there are suggestions for the government to reintroduce rent control. The government, however, is worried that rent control may have the adverse effects of reducing the supply of rental flats resulting in the landlords being selective on their tenants and the negative effect of pushing up the rental level. Given that there are divergent views of rent control in the community, we must not act hastily on this matter. The second area is increasing the supply of public housing. As announced by the Chief Executive in the twenty fourteen Policy Address, the government has adopted the total housing supply target of four hundred and seventy thousand units for the coming ten years, with public housing accounting for sixty percent. That is about PRH and home ownership units. And so there will be about two hundred and eighty thousand flats in total, with about two hundred thousand PRH flats and about eighty thousand HOS flats. It is the fact that the bulk of the supply of public housing will only be completed in the second five-year period. The Hong Kong Housing Authority, HA, has already embarked on the necessary preparatory work such as identifying sites and conducting other planning process. In order to achieve this target, we need to secure the support of the local community. We also need to face challenges arising from the manpower shortage of the construction industry and the financial constraints of the HA. In this connection, the HA will make the best use of PRH resources, continue to enhance its cost-effectiveness and to strengthen the sustainability of its operative mode. On the other hand, it will carry out assessment on the additional resources required for implementing housing target. We will take up detailed discussions with the government with a view to ensuring its long-term financial sustainability. I would also like to mention about the redevelopment of PRH. The HA has recently announced that it had completed the review of the redevelopment potential of twenty-two HPRH estates. However, I must point out that from the resources and time perspective, it is impossible for the development of all two twenty-two estates to take place at the same time. According to experience, residents affected by redevelopments always wish to be rehoused in the same district or nearby. Therefore, we must first consider whether there are suitable rehousing resources in the relevant district before kick-starting the redevelopment process. At the same time, we need to strike a balance as using the rehousing resources will have implications on applicants on the PRH rating list. We also need to carry out a series of technical studies for the estates proposed for redevelopment, as well as consulting the residents and the stakeholders concerned. And we need to conduct planning on redevelopment and for the provision of ancillary facilities such as transport and community facilities too. All these will take time. Only when concrete redevelopment parameters are available for a particular project would the HA redraw up the redevelopment timetable and make announcements on these projects. We will consult the district councils and residents concerned. Usually, this will take place about three years prior to the actual redevelopment. And then fourthly, monitoring the development of private residential property market. In light of the new housing supply target in the next ten years, we will continue to monitor the trend of construction and sale of private residential properties. The Development Bureau will continue to provide housing land. We estimate that about seventy-one thousand private residential units will be available in the next three to four years for sale. I'm pleased to answer questions from members on policy issues and my colleagues will also be pleased to take up questions on the implementation and financial matters. That is colleagues from the Housing Department. Thank you. Now, I'll open the floor to questions. As usual, the time limit is four minutes per member on four questions and answers. First, Mr. Sin Chung Kai. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask about redevelopment. In the Policy Address, there's an announcement on redeveloping the Wafu Estate. In paragraph eight of the opening remarks, the Secretary mentioned twenty-two housing estates to be redeveloped. And you say you will consult the district councils and rental parties three years before the actual redevelopment. It seems that there's a shift in your practice because before, there's a five-year rolling period. So as soon as there's plan for redevelopment, you start consulting residents and then they could be trawling out of the estate so you could eventually achieve your program. Now, for the twenty-two estates, it seems that you haven't got a timetable. But in the Policy Address, it's been announced that Wafu Estate would be redeveloped. So has a formal announcement been made on the redevelopment of Wafu Estate? So has it started the three-year cycle? Because before, when you have the five-year rolling period arrangement, you would actually send out notices to residents to say that for this estate is now reached the start of the five-year rolling period and so the redevelopment process will start. So what is the new arrangement like? Do you still have the five-year rolling period or you no longer tell people just three years before you tell them, okay, there will be redevelopment of this estate, that what you're doing? Secretary.
In the eighties and nineties, yes, there was a comprehensive redevelopment program for housing estate and that program has been completed. Here, we're talking about redevelopment of aged housing estates. It's because several years ago, there was this suggestion that the HA shouldn't just redevelop estates. Instead, we should consider the condition of the estates so that we could reduce waste or wastage of resources. Now, if an estate is still suitable for habitation, then we should not redevelop it at a whim. And but then, of course, if there would be escalating costs in maintaining the structure of the estate, there may be a need for redevelopment. And also, if by redevelopment, we could increase the number of units, then we see potential in redeveloping an estate. But as I said in my opening remarks, we have to see whether there will be rehousing units nearby or in the same estate. Now, rehousing resources are important because residents would always want to be rehoused in the same district. That's why we have to take into account all these factors before we could draw up a concrete timetable. So that's why at this point, we're not going to say specifically which housing estate would be redeveloped. For Wafu Estate, there is a possibility for redevelopment because nearby there are new land plots that could be used for building public housing. So that means we could address the trawling issue. As for the concrete timetable, the Housing Authority still needs to conduct technical studies and other studies and also study on the traffic impact and so on. Now, I'll be brief. In the past, the Housing Authority would make a formal announcement that your unit would be redeveloped and then Housing Department would give out a piece of paper to the people to say that now this is the start of the five-year process for redevelopment. But you're not doing that anymore, right? So how do you formally initiate a redevelopment project? Or would you just tell people three years before that, okay, now your estate will be redeveloped? So what do you do now? Now, we don't no longer have this five-year rolling program. So we don't have a timetable as to which estate would be redeveloped when. But we will certainly make an announcement three years before the actual redevelopment. Mr. Tam Yew Chong.
Now, the government would like to increase housing supply in various districts across the territory. There are GIC sites or there is sites reserved for community services. Now, these sites would now be used for housing purpose. Local residents have a strong reaction to that because they believe that will increase the population density in the district. It will affect the environment and the traffic. And originally, they've been hoping to get libraries or other community facilities, but now the site will be used for housing instead. So they no longer get those facilities. So wherever you try to do this, there'll be a strong local reaction. In Chi Moon and another district, there have been residents coming to us. So how are you going to address such issues? Now, you need sites for building housing. At the same time, there is opposition from the residents. So how do you address those conflicts? Would you go to explain things to owners, corporations, residents, organizations, and so on? Can you try to explain to residents what impact would there be and how you can convince and do you do such work?
Secretary. On identifying sites for housing. Now, if there's major development program, of course, we want new sites, but that would take time for us to create new sites. So in the near term, in the next five years or so, it's inevitable that we have to look for sites in developed areas. Now, some of these sites may have already been zoned residential. Some may have been zoned to GIC sites, government institution and community sites. And so there's a need for a formal process for rezoning the site. And of course, the Planning Department will be the gatekeeper here. The Planning Department will make sure that if the site is to be rezoned, the requirements on community facilities and so on will still be met. Now, in local consultation, as Mr. Tam Yew Chong pointed out, sometimes there could be local views on such issues. So we need an interdepartmental effort here to tell local residents that in terms of the traffic, in terms of education and other community facilities, there is no need for concern even if a GIC site is rezoned as residential. Because even if we wish to rezone sites, we have to meet all the planning standards and parameters in Hong Kong.
Now, I hope that something concrete will be done. You said that there'll be an interdepartmental effort, but at the district levels, sometimes government officials would not like to attend those meetings because it would be difficult for them to explain and there might be issues discussing with residents. So should there be any guidelines from the administration requesting that the department to do it? Now, members may be aware that we have three bureaus. The Transport and Housing Bureau, the Development Bureau and Environment Bureau. We, on a regular basis, have inter-bureau meetings and we discuss these issues. And I will go back and enhance cooperation between bureaus. And sometimes, housing and transport are often involved and we work together closely. Next, Mr. Tan Kapiu.
Thank you, Chairman. Several questions on HOS, Home Ownership Scheme. Question number or reply number zero four two. Now, labor unions have told us that in the past, when HOS was produced, there was a team responsible for supervising the quality of contractors, whether there would be any short-piling problems. And there was another team dedicated to HOS production. But since the suspension of the HOS project, that team was gone. And ten years from then, we have two hundred and eighty thousand units as a housing target, public housing target, and eighty thousand as HOS units. So would that be a dedicated team to supervise contractors? Now, coming back to the next issue. In the last Policy Address of Mr. Donald Chang, there was a clear undertaking that HOS would be resumed. So when will the first batch of HOS units be available for drawing lots or for sale? Would it be twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen? The last question. Now, property prices may be coming down, but for mass-market flats or small-to-medium-sized flats, prices continue to stay at the present level. Now, there is a saying that the pricing may not necessarily be set at seventy percent of the market price. So does it mean that there'll be a change? Will the criterion be the affordability of the people? I will take one of the questions and I'll defer the other question to Mr. Aida Fung. Now, we expect that the HOS flats will be ready in seven years and the first batch will be ready for sale by the end of this year. On pricing, the Housing Department has a formula. They would look at the target of the HOS flats and if they need to take out mortgage to buy HOS flats, they would look at the mortgage income ratio and other living expenses. So based on this formula, they find out the affordability of the target group and set the price. So it's not set to the particular percentage, but historically speaking, it's basically a thirty percent discount. So roughly, what would be the discount in terms of the market price? Well, we cannot make a general remark, but basically, the calculation will be done based on the affordability and the community has all along accepted this approach.
Mr. Aida Fung. We have site supervising staff from the department to monitor the construction of HOS and PRH units. So based on the increase in workload with an increase in housing target, we will appropriately increase staff establishment size. But would that be a dedicated team to supervise the construction of HOS? A dedicated team for HOS production? It's no different in terms of supervising the construction of PRH or HOS flats. They supervise the construction work and that covers HOS and PRH. And basically, there is no difference in terms of the construction of HOS, PRH. So one team would supervise both.
Dr. Priscilla. Thank you, Chairman. First question on rental control. Now, I have a question. For those waiting for more than three years for PRH, would there be any rent subsidy? And for the middle class, they're not eligible for PRH and they are so-called the grassroots middle class. And they're not, they cannot afford private housing. So would rent subsidy be available for them for, say, two years so that they could get by whilst waiting for flat allocation? Now, there's also a media report calling for a review on the demand-led approach. At this stage, the Urban Renewal Authority, in reviewing the demand-led scheme, what are the issues concerning resources? There is a shortfall of expectation of the local residents. They would like to see the demand-led scheme to facilitate the redevelopment of older districts like Sekue Me, Ma Ta Wai, Taikok Cho, et cetera. They would like to see, they would like to benefit from this scheme. Now, on studio flats for young people or young couples, would that need to be taken into account? The last question is on the work between bureaus. Now, there is, that is a need for the environment and housing. We have been striving for a waterfront promenade in Cham Shui Po for many years as air ventilation is poor there. There will be public housing in the district. And on the whole, yes, the goal should be to provide housing. But how can we strike a balance between satisfying housing need and also providing an environment or to minimize the damage to the environment in the community? Secretary. On the demand-led scheme of the URA. In fact, URA is under the purview of the Development Bureau. I can relate your comment to them. But I understand that the origin of the demand-led scheme is to facilitate redevelopment of the older districts. Of course, local views would also be taken into account. About the four major estates in West Kowloon, they are concerned about the waterfront promenade and the related issues. Whenever we have new projects and when we attend DC meetings, we would hear views from the community. And on other planning issues like the waterfront promenade, we try to deal with them, but sometimes compromises are necessary. If we want to increase PRH reduction, inevitably, we would need to optimize the use of some sites in the community or to maximize the plot ratio. Now, I note Dr. Priscilla's concern and will try our best. On rental control, in the consultation process of the Long-Term Housing Strategy Steering Committee, this point was discussed. But in their report, it stated that they do not recommend the reinstatement of rental control because this may induce a rise in rental level. We don't think this is an effective way. Next, Mr. Wong Ko Hing.
Chairman. On Secretary's speaking notes, I have a question. This administration has committed to formulating a long-term housing strategy and also a ten-year housing production target. I welcome these initiatives. However, these don't address short-term problems or immediate problems. We have over two hundred thousand people on the waiting list for PRH and I think there are two issues that the government must follow up on. The first question is about rental control. Although in the speaking notes, the Secretary mentioned that the government would not act hastily on this matter. However, at least, shouldn't a review be conducted? If you don't even have a review, are you being responsible? I think you should review this issue. At the panel on housing at the Legislative Council, I have put this on our agenda. I think the issue should be reviewed. Secretary, would you please respond to this issue? Second question. The ten-year housing supply target is here. However, this doesn't address immediate problems. And that is, there are eligible PRH applicants on the waiting list waiting for housing offers. And I mean those eligible ones. And yet, because the supply can't keep up with the demand and they are forced to live in flats with high rent. So will rent subsidy be available to these applicants? Or at least, can tax deductions be given to these applicants so that this can serve as an expedient assistance to them? Two questions. Secretary, please. On rental control, at the Legco Panel Meeting or the Council Meeting, we discussed this issue a number of times. And in the consultation process of the Long-Term Housing Strategy Steering Committee, we heard divergent views. During a seminar recently, I said that there would be a study on this issue and immediately, I heard a strong response from the community. So the views are diverse and we also need to consider what should rental control cover and the possible impact. And there are experiences overseas and we're analyzing these examples. I understand the Legco is also proceeding with this area of work and there'll be a thematic discussion later on and we will give a more detailed explanation. As of today, the government's position is that we have reservations over rental control because we're concerned that even with good intention, this may induce a negative effect. This may cause rental level to be pushed up. As for eligible PRH applicants on the waiting list, they are still waiting to be housed. And whether rental subsidy or tax deductions could be given to them, I will reflect this comment on the tax deductions to the Financial Secretary. But as I told Dr. Priscilla just now, on rental control, we, housing supply at the moment is tight. And if we will introduce rental control, this will result in landlords being selective on their tenants. And in terms of the Community Care Fund's living allowance earlier, we saw this happening, so we do have some reservations. Next, Dr. Professor Joseph Lee.
My apologies, I was discussing about the Shanghai trip. My question is reply number zero one nine. In relation to the PRH flats production, there'll be about eighty thousand flats available between twenty thirteen, fourteen to twenty seventeen, eighteen. So my question is, for existing housing estates in various districts, there are vacant flats available to be allocated. Some are waiting to be renovated and they are vacant at the moment. How much money is involved? And altogether, how, including these vacant flats, how many flats in total can be made available for allocation? Now, according to the information provided in our reply to your question, we're talking about the new housing estates. And for vacancy rate, I would maybe I would defer to a director to take this question. Or PS. Now, for the flats recovered, according to our experience, every year, we recover about seven thousand flats which can be made, which can be relocated to applicants. However, PRH tenants can also apply for rehousing. So some may be reserved for rehousing of PRH tenants or trawling. And there are seven thousand vacant flats recovered every year on the whole. So altogether, close to a hundred thousand flats can be made available every year. So how can you shorten the waiting list? There are over two hundred thousand applicants on the waiting list. If we just look at the waiting list, we need to divide them into categories. And for example, there are household applicants
And for example, there are household applicants and elderly applicants. And from the date of their registration, in three years, we, the target is three years for them to be allocated with a flat. And there is no, or to get the first offer. It seems that young people join the queue very early nowadays. And our priority is to allocate flats to families. We look at the trend and on a regular basis, we announce the latest situation concerning the waiting list. And over the past twelve months, for applicants finally received an offer, we look at the period of the waiting time. And basically, the average waiting time is maintained at three years. If there is any problem, the waiting time may be longer. But the waiting time up to the first offer is maintained as at the three years. That's our target.
Mr. Vincent Fang. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pick up on the opening remarks of the secretary. You said in the next ten years, you'll build sixty percent of the housing target being public housing. Now, I know that for each P R H unit, it costs about seven hundred thousand. So if you need twenty thousand units, two hundred eighty thousand units, we're talking about over a hundred billion dollars, close to two hundred billion dollars. And then your annual budget is just about sixty-eight point eight billion dollars. So you're short more than a hundred billion dollars. Are you going to seek funding from the Finance Committee? Because we don't want you to do it again, divesting properties like what you did with Link Ritz. That's the first point. Second point, out of the two hundred eighty thousand new public rental housing units, could you provide shopping arcades on the ground floors or lower floors? So small and medium-sized enterprises or even micro businesses would have somewhere to go. I've said this many times. Now, for the two hundred eighty thousand units, you have to go through many hurdles. You need hundred and fifty sites. You need to go past the planning procedure, that's the first hurdle. And then you don't know whether you'll get the money. Even if you have the land and the money, do you have enough people to build the units? The two hundred eighty thousand units? If at the end, you can't get through all these hurdles, then would it just be abolished? Like the Hong Kong Land for Hong Kong Property idea?
Well, of course, all the issues you mentioned are of great concern to us. We're talking about substantial supply of two hundred eighty thousand P R H units. Yes, we need land, we need manpower, we need funding and so on. If there's not enough land supply, of course, that will affect the speed with which we could roll out the units. And of course, building costs could escalate as well. Now, maybe depends, right now, the average cost of a housing P R H unit is about seven hundred thousand dollars. But it depends on the location of a small room. Of course, it may cost more. But now, we're just talking about ratio one to one, P R H to H O S in terms of building program. And of course, we can't just build more P R H or H O S and then we could resolve the housing problem. So our understanding with the government is this, in the coming year, the Housing Authority will start discussion with the government on the long-term funding arrangement. But the Housing Authority must also show that it is making good use of resources. It's being cost-effective in its operation. But of course, we do need additional resources because we're going to build more P R H and H O S units. Now, as Mr. Fang pointed out, the Housing Authority still has a reserve of about sixty billion dollars. That should help us through the next few years. And so that will allow us enough time to discuss things with the government. But as to how we could generate more revenue, there are many possibilities. But we have no plans to divest properties again like what we've done ten years ago. But how do we make the most of our assets? Now, perhaps in the new P R H estates, will there be shopping arcades? And what is our policy for small businesses? We'll definitely consider that carefully. What about workers, construction workers or shopping arcades on the lower floors of P R H estates? Now, if we could develop commercial space on low floors, we'll do so for shops. In some estates, actually, we have done that. Finances, of course, are for social enterprises. And of course, that's a key concern of this government. We'll certainly do what we could to support social enterprises.
Mr. Leng Chi Ching, I also want to talk about the finances for building more P R H units. In the past, you've divested certain assets to generate revenue. And there's another program to sell P R H units. Now, many sitting tenants believe it would be a good idea if you sell them their units, their P R H units, so they don't need to buy H O S units. So have you considered that selling P R H units could be a source of income? And then on O two, five and O three, three, they are on similar issues. There's the reply zero number. It's about rehousing and clearances. Now, I could understand there could be delays in clearances sometimes because of land issues and rehousing issues. But what I'd like to find out is after clearance, there will be rehousing. But what is the arrangement? You know, rehousing to P R H or temporary housing? Or temporary shelters? That is the transition centers that you have. So could all these measures help you achieve your policy target? I asked how come in twenty thirteen, you couldn't reach your target? Yes, I could see the reasons, but at the end of the day, the fact is you did not reach your target. Now, when there's going to be land resumption in the northeast new territories in Hong Shui Kiu, that may present even a bigger challenge because there are many people living in those areas. So if you resume land, there will be huge rehousing needs. So what is your practice and policy? On selling P R H units? I will respond to that and then I'll defer to Ms. Agnes Wong on other issues. Now, in the eighties, the government sold some P R H units, the Tenants Purchase Scheme, T P S. We did not compel sitting tenants to buy the units. There were some deep discount at a time offered. And there were thirty-nine estates designated to be included in the T P S. At the end, only about fifty or sixty percent of the sitting tenants bought their units. So for each block of such estates, there will be a mix of P R H tenants and unit owners that thus creates some problems in management. We've reviewed the situation in the past few years. We've also received views from the community. Of course, some tenants have expressed interest in the T P S. They would like the scheme to be extended. But then, at the same time, we face real challenges in estate management. So there won't be new T P S estates. But for the existing thirty-nine estates, if a city tenants want to buy their units, they are more than welcome to do so. Of course, with the relaunch of the H O S, some sitting tenants may choose to buy H O S class through the green form list. The other question on the rehousing clearies. We will support the plans, programs of the Buildings Department in clearing squatter huts and rooftop structures. So every year, we will have liaison with the Lands Department and Buildings Department. We will find out more or less what their plan is and then we'll reserve certain units for them. But as to which part, area will be cleared and when, we are actually in a passive position, it's up to the Buildings Department and Lands Department. And that's the reason why we may not be able to achieve the target each year. Next, Mr. Tony Chee.
The secretary mentioned in his opening remarks that there were three major tasks for the T H B. One is to increase the total housing supply, two hundred thousand P R H units and eighty thousand H O S. That's, of course, a huge challenge. And you may, I'm really concerned about the availability of resources, especially in terms of manpower. So my question is on reply zero number, T H B bracket H O four five. Now, if you want to increase public housing supply, you need to find sites. And you have to consult people and you need to explain to local residents. And you have to consider the design as well, to see whether it's in compliance with the relevant ordinances and regulations. Now, reply paragraph number one, there are twelve poles to be created. They have to do with the mandatory building inspection scheme, the mandatory windows inspection scheme. Twenty-four poles are to do with the minor works control system. So I don't see you providing manpower for this because there are a lot of preparatory work that needs to be done. And you will need a lot of architects and engineers. How come you're not increasing manpower in that area? That's the first question. Second question, we attach great importance to greening. What about landscape architects? Is there any plan to increase the establishment? Reply zero number O four five, that question is on building control. So that's why the information we provide is on building control. But then, of course, we will have new P R H supply. There will be a strong demand for professionals and technical staff, especially, and then this will also cover various stages of work, including the preparatory stage. Perhaps I could defer to Ms. Ada Feng. Reply zero number O four five is to ask about the manpower for the three program areas. Of course, there will be creation of new poles in other program areas, not listed out here. Landscape architects. That there will be an increase in poles, but it's not shown in this reply. Perhaps the administration could provide the figures later because I'm really concerned about the manpower support. Now, in the next three years, will you increase the number of landscape architects and so on? Because you're going to have so much more work. I know it's tough now to carry out works, the sites usually are small. You need to explain things to local residents and you need to apply for rezoning and so on. So even if it's the same number of projects you're backing upon, the work involved is so much more these days. That's why there will pressure, work pressure, it may affect staff morale. If you don't have enough staff, it would be difficult for you to achieve your targets. So perhaps, Secretary, you could provide the figures later.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we'll provide the information after the meeting. Now, of course, the government attaches great importance to housing's policy. Compared to other departments, there is actually a higher increase in manpower for the housing area.
Next, Mr. Wong Kwok Hing. I'd like to ask Secretary some questions and give my comments on his speaking notes. In particular, increasing the supply of housing, public housing. Members have brought out this point, indeed. Housing, public housing in Hong Kong is very important to our grassroots. It is the most important means of providing accommodation to them. It has huge impact on their families and their children. Now, I'd like to ask about financial viability under the existing circumstances. Now, the costs for P R H units are quite high. I don't think this is a problem that cannot be resolved. This is the administration's responsibility. However, we do see a practical problem. I'm a district councillor and I, and Mr. Tammy Chung also mentioned this issue. When we increase the supply of public housing, the best way to do it is to do it in a new development areas. However, if supply is increased at the disposed sites, there are existing buildings in the vicinity and the district councils face a lot of pressure. Now, many support the provision of more public housing. But say, for example, if you build infilled buildings, then the local community would react very strongly. They would like to have a park instead. So how are you going to strike a balance? For the target, ten-year public housing target of two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand would be for P R H and eighty thousand for H O S. And in the urban districts, I think the community accept as H O S. So can we make some adjustments? In terms of the mix, I recall in the past that per year, the production was not just eight thousand. It could be as many as ten thousand. So H O S would be conducive to generating more income to cover the expenditure. And also, there'd be more opportunities for P R H tenants to buy H O S flats and for more P R H flats to be available for the applicants on the waiting list. So would you study this issue further? This is a big issue indeed. But at the macro level, we need to consider. Based on the recommendations of the Steering Committee on Long-Term Housing Strategy, the total housing supply target would be four hundred and seventy thousand in the next ten years, with sixty percent being public housing and forty percent being private housing. Some, there are diverse views on the proportion. I think providing more public housing would be a proper balance. And also, we would not give an impression that more private housing would generate more problem. Now, based on the waiting list, we cannot substantially decrease the supply of public housing. That's why we adopt the same ratio and that's also the same target. Eighty thousand H O S flats, now comparing to a decade ago where, when there was a peak in terms of P R H production, this is far fewer. But comparing to the some ten thousand H O S per year, we produce eight thousand. And this is not too far away. And the mix between public and P R H and H O S units is not fixed. It depends on the market situation. Mr. Wu Chi Wei.
Through various channels, I have expressed that increasing supply to tackle housing problem is just a long-term solution. In the short term, Hong Kong people are faced with issues of tight housing supply and increase in rental level. And time and again, I asked the secretary, has it to do with the frozen H O S flats which have yet to be made available in the secondary market? And can something be done with the mechanism for these to be available for rent? Now, for H O S with premium not yet paid, that doesn't mean, that means that the owner doesn't have a full title. Perhaps there'll be a
Perhaps there'll be a split with the government, with maybe he just holds forty percent of the title. So if HOS flats with premium not yet paid can be made available for rent through some arrangements, Secretary, let's say a certain proportion of premium would have to be paid to the government. Now, Secretary, on various occasions, you said that the discussion would be carried out. And yet, this has not been done. And so far, we already have three hundred thousand HOS flats with premiums not yet paid. Only five percent could be, if five percent could be made available for rent, this will substantially increase supply in the market. Secretary, Mr. Wu Chi Wei has made this suggestion on a number of occasions. Now, on HOS flats, HOS owners are not allowed to sublet their flats. Of course, if they have paid premium for the flat, this will be treated as a private flat and they won't be subject to any restrictions. In terms of subletting, there are, there are concerns over interest as the government is subsidizing these owners. Well, how about a split of the rent? But after the submission of the LTHS Steering Committee report by the end of this year, we will formulate the relevant strategy and we will further consider the issue you mentioned. However, I'd like to stress that this issue is quite complex. Legislative amendments would be necessary to implement any arrangements. And in the past, when subletting was not allowed, we also need to consider how we deal with these cases. But I understand that you have raised this issue many times. I see in the interim report, there is no mentioning of this issue that will be considered by the administration. That's why I asked this follow-up question. Second question, Secretary, I understand that you'd like to find more land to build more units. But at the district level, the community may be supportive and yet the scale, the project should be scaled down. And the community would like to see the, would like the project to be scaled down and yet the view is not heated. You'd like to maximize the plot ratio. So is this a deadline? Secretary, well, this deadline is given to us by the community and we try our best to meet the target at the district level. Of course, there is room for discussion. We would like to maximize the resources. We'd like to maximize the plot ratio and building height restrictions. And at the same time, we need to consider local views. If, in the end, we'd like to come to a solution acceptable by all. I don't want to comment on specific cases, but in the process of negotiation, indeed, sometimes we encounter difficulties. Mr. Long Yu Chong. Now, Secretary has stressed again that there are divergent views in the community on rental control. And is there a chance to narrow this view? Or would you just say that because views are diverse, we should just shun the issue? Rental control has a huge impact on the grassroots. And Secretary just mentioned that although it may be out of good intention, this may have adverse effects, but we need to face up to the issue. If you just, if you want to eliminate the biased views, can you set up a committee to conduct a holistic review on the issue and collect comprehensive data before telling us that because views are divergent, you're not going to proceed with this idea? I don't think you're being impartial in dealing with this issue. So my first question is whether you can set up a committee to deal with this issue. Second question is redevelopment. In the twenty, in the nine, in the eighties and nineties, there are twenty-six blocks, there were twenty-six blocks redeveloped. And nowadays, we see piecemeal repairs. It's a waste of public money and it also causes great nuisance to the local residents. So can you expedite redevelopment progress? Near those twenty-two housing estates which may be completed soon, can redevelopment of existing estates in the community, in the vicinity be expedited instead of setting a deadline of three years, as mentioned? If there is a new housing estate completed nearby, will redevelopment of the estate be expedited? Secretary, on rental control, I have never shunned the issue. In replying to electrical members' questions, I never avoided this issue. When we complete our analysis, I will explain to members of this council. And the panel will be discussing this issue in a month or so. And we will be providing more information on redevelopment. We consider structural safety and the costs involved in repair. And also, if more potential can be unleashed after redevelopment, these will be also be considered. And we also consider rehousing resources. However, we should note that in a major redevelopment program, much staff, much of the staff establishment would be deployed on the deadline of three years. We need to have a clear timetable. That is to say, the HA is confident in completing these redevelopment projects in three years. And we will allow ample time for residents to be notified. This cannot happen in just a year or so. And that's why we set it at three years. But we will come up with a specific timetable before we announce any redevelopment program. We don't want to raise the concerns of local residents. Now, my question hasn't been answered, whether a dedicated or task force will be set up? Secretary just said that this issue has been debated in the council. Now, he hasn't answered, does it mean that there's no need to set up a task force? Chairman, if this is discussed by a committee or task force. Now, first of all, in the LTHS Steering Committee, Committee's report, there was a detailed discussion on rental control. And this problem cannot be resolved by setting up a task force or committee. This is a problem facing the whole community. Dr. Kenneth Lo.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask a question on the Secretary's speaking notes. Now, on increasing the supply of public housing, members have asked questions on the financial aspect. I have been a member for six years. Now, four hundred and seventy thousand units is the total housing supply target. This is confirmed. But I have two main questions about the Working Group on Long-Term Financial Planning led by the Financial Secretary. There, in their report, there was a chapter on housing, three point four eight. Now, I don't know whether members have this report with you. Let me read it out. If the PRH rent can be increased by five percent per year, then by twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the Housing Authority would need an injection of thirty-one billion dollars. If in the next three years, assuming basically that the PRH rent can only be increased by five percent, the HA will require an injection of twenty-nine to eighty-two billion dollars. Now, this is the background information. Now, my question is this. On the supply of four hundred and seventy thousand units, when are you going to report, when are you going to issue a comprehensive report on financial viability? Second question, I want to get some basic information earlier, Secretary. When you attended the Public Accounts Committee hearing, you mentioned that the each PRH unit costs seven hundred thousand. However, the chairman of the working group told us that in fact, the costs have risen to one point two million dollars per unit. So which version is true and will the cost continue to go up? And you also mentioned sixty billion dollar on your, on the HA's reserve. So are there any measures to boost investment return with this sixty billion dollars in the coming three years?
Secretary. Now, for the sixty billion dollar reserve of the HA, we adopt a sound investment strategy. Perhaps Ms. Annie Tang, Deputy Director, could supplement later. On the average building cost of a PRH unit, we're still basing it on seven hundred thousand dollars. But of course, with increasing construction cost, the cost might go up. But that's on average, the figure. For some projects, the cost could be higher, depends on the location of the site. For example, it may be the actual location or it may be the complexities of the site conditions. And may, it's possible that the cost of each unit could go up to a million dollars. So it depends on the site. On the finances of the HA, now, the Housing Authority does not set the rental level on the basis of cost, but rather, we look at the situation in the community and also there's cap. If, say, the increase should be more than ten percent in a year, we'll still cap it at ten percent. So if other costs go up, we cannot increase rent proportionally. So that's why HA would always run at a loss. When would there be a comprehensive financial, financial viability report on the four hundred and seventy thousand units? I think I should correct you. We're not talking about four hundred and seventy thousand public sector housing units. We're just talking about two hundred and eighty thousand out of the four hundred and seventy thousand because the four hundred and seventy thousand cover both public and private housing. So two hundred and eighty thousand public housing, two hundred thousand PRH units and eighty thousand HOS units. Now, we need to embark upon this massive building program. It's not just about getting more money. We have to see whether we're making the most of our current existing resources. We need to make savings and generate revenue where possible. I cannot promise you a report. It first depends on our discussion with the government and our projections. On investment, Ms. Tang, a quick response, please. The investment strategy of the Housing Department, as pointed out by the Secretary, is to ensure that we have sufficient cash flow to meet our operational expenses. And we have cautious and investment strategy. We spread out our investment to make sure we have good long-term returns. Now, we put our investment in the exchange fund, in capital preservation products or in bonds, in currencies like Hong Kong dollars, US dollars and so on.
Mr. Paul Jay. The Public Account Committee of this term has looked into the granting of land for private hospitals. Now, I understand the Secretary actually attended hearings. And then now we know there are some charitable organizations using cheap land for running hotels. Now, there is a tight land supply in Hong Kong. If the government could not monitor the proper use of land resources, that could present a major problem. So on the current case, would you take up investigation on your own initiative? Otherwise, you might have to attend the P H C meetings and there would be a waste of resources. Just now, at least two members referred to rent control. Even our country's president said in Europe recently, and they have tried all types of systems, political systems. They have considered everything, republic, state and whatever. And they think the current state is the most appropriate. Now, we're not talking about politics here. We are talking about rent control. We've tried everything. And in the past decade or so, we find, we have found that rent control would severely distort the market. Now, of course, many have asked for rent control among us. But there are many other members who are opposed to rent control because it distorts markets substantially. And some people, you know, they rely on the rental properties for income. And if there's rent control, people would not want to rent out their units. And they also have great difficulties recovering the units. So I think the government has to stand firm on this. There is no need for us to do any overseas study or whatever because we've tried it already. The third point is about selling of PRH units. Of course, our past experience is that we encountered some problems. In a block, in the same block, there were both PRH units and sold units, then that presents a management problem. For the thirty-nine estates, they, a problem left from the past, perhaps it's difficult to tackle that. But could we do more, like encouraging the remaining sitting tenants to buy the units? So we try to turn the remaining rental units into sold units. Then it will make management easier. Because now, there is a mixed, there is a mix of rental units and sold units and that presents a major management problem. So do you have any strategy against that?
Let me take up the first and the third question. The Development Bureau is in charge of land supply. The Director of Lands is here, perhaps you could say something. And then on selling rental PRH units, as some members pointed out, we have no plans to designate new tenant purchase scheme estates. But for the existing thirty-nine estates, they are still sitting tenants. We allow them to buy their units. But of course, we cannot force people to buy their units. Actually, the terms are really favorable if sitting tenants want to buy their units. But we don't want to give the impression the government is putting pressure on sitting tenants to buy their units. So anytime, there will still be a mix of tenants and unit owners. Indeed, that is a problem. And the Housing Department colleagues have always been trying to find a way to address that. We will keep up our effort. Director of Lands, can you please respond to the point on the use of land by NGOs? Well, there is an individual media report. If we're talking about private land grant cases, we will look at it together with the relevant Policy Bureau. Now, we have to look at the private grant terms and also the policy intention of the grant. And then we have to see whether the government has any agreements with these NGOs and we'll see whether there's any breach of the terms and conditions. Next, Mr. Kwak Wai Kung. My question is on THB, on reply number THB O O four. Hong Kong land for Hong Kong people is to restrict buying from people outside Hong Kong and then we could keep land prices stable. Now, the CE has recently announced the abolition of the Hong Kong land for Hong Kong people policy. That might affect property prices. Anyway, on HOS, if in the next decade, we're to build eighty thousand HOS units, we see actually for the first five years, there would just be about six thousand units. It doesn't, it's far cry from the annual production target of five thousand units on average. So how are we going to achieve the six-four split in the total housing supply target? How can we provide sufficient HOS which will serve to stabilize the property market? Now, this is a channel for the working people to buy their own homes. Because in the first five years, you are just building about six thousand units. You mean, you're saying that in the next five years, you will boost production to more than nine thousand? Can you do it? I doubt it. Secretary, well, that's the challenge we face now indeed. Uh, earlier on, when I briefed the Housing Panel on the Policy Address twenty fourteen, I've mentioned this point. Now, it's not the case that even if we could find a piece of land, we could build units in the next two years or so. There is a lead time for construction, design, planning process and everything. To increase the supply of H O S to eight thousand units on average per year, that's the new target spelled out in the policy address this year. In the past, the target was five thousand units. In fact, in the last term of the government, towards the end of the term, there was a plan that starting from twenty twelve to thirteen, or rather, the four years after twenty sixteen seventeen, uh we, the fifteen thousand units would be completed. So we do have to do a lot of catching up and I agree, this is a major challenge. Okay, you're trying to catch up, but how do we ensure the building quality? Because just now, some members asked whether there would be sufficient manpower. In um trying to catch up with the figures, eh eh it's not that um uh we'll only do it later on, but now already, we need to do more to make sure that we could get the land we need and we could complete the planning processes required. And in terms of manpower, uh during the peak, a construction peak of infrastructure and housing projects, of course, that would pose pressure. And we would um want to coordinate with the rest of departments, hopefully then we could address that better. But it's true, on the whole, there is a major challenge in manpower supply. Next, Doctor Fernando Zheng. Mister Chairman, the Secretary has pointed out a key concern in our housing policy in his opening remarks, that is subdivided units, S D U's. Many are living in these um poor, uh uh S O D, S D U's of poor condition. Now, Hong Kong people don't just want um housing, they want better housing. But then what we find in reality is that Hong Kong people's living, housing condition is getting poorer. So how are we going to address that? The Secretary said in the long run, we need to provide more PRH, I'm sure everybody agrees to, to that. But then you're saying that you can't build enough, in the near term, there's no land, uh uh in the long term, there could still be a problem. And in the near term, if you say uh you want to control supply and so on, you have to think about it. You know, rental you, levels of S D U is even higher than that for luxury properties per square foot is preposterous. For many low-income households, they spend a third at least of their income on rentals. And because there's no rent control, so owners are allowed to boost rent anytime. And you say that, but you say that rent control would become the productive. So I think in your opening remarks, you have um highlighted a crock, a key issue in housing matters. But then you negate all these suggestions, so how are we going to do with that? You say in the long term, we'll build more PRH, but in the first five years, there's no way you could boost supply. It's only in the next term, the government maybe will start to see some results. So what about the coming five years? We're talking about low-income households who are inadequately housed, how are you going to help them? Rent assistance that's um actually taken up by the owners, by the landlords. Can you not focus on rent control? If there's rent control, then you could um, you give rent assistance to the low-income households at least, the standard of living could be improved a little in the near term. Is this should be a transitional measure, why can't you do it?
Secretary, rental control, S D U. Well, Chairman, it's difficult to say in just a minute or two on the issues of uh rental control. And anyway, that with this issue will be discussed more thoroughly uh by the H A later on. And uh S, S D U is a funny issue. And uh this, we are uh in this inevitable situation. Uh, all the concerns I raised are real concerns. And indeed, there are divergent views on rental control in the community. Now, just now Mister Paul Che also uh mentioned um an alternative view. So that's the, uh more or less, the situation or the views expressed by the community. We say that increasing supply can tackle the problem of at the usage source. Because our public housing policy is that eligible households for eligible um family applicants, we'd like to maintain the average waiting time at three years. And we more or less are able to do that. For young singletons currently living in subdivided flats, according to our policy, um priority will not be given to them, so three years waiting time cannot be maintained. So based on the um circumstances of different applicants, we need to consider these issues further. And the, uh we commissioned Policy Twenty One Limited uh to conduct a study on the uh S D U tenants. And in the coming year, we will also commission the C N S D, the Census and Statistics Department to conduct a survey. So as to find out the real picture uh concerning subdivided units, we will follow up on the issue. This is not a problem that we could avoid, so we'll definitely follow up on it. Next, Mister Lan Kwong.
Chairman, I don't know um whether professionally, Professor Anthony Zheng is actually helping C Y Lang or not. He just pointed out all the problems without providing solution. When, let's imagine, when the president is elected, he may uh make all sorts of promises, but now you say that the problems cannot really be resolved. And this is not the first time subdivided units after conducting studies, well, um, those uh measures proposed were not feasible. And uh there was a fund, there was suggestions to set up a fund. And uh that's why we had the filibustering exercise. Now, um Mister Paul Che, uh it's really uh for uh cold-blooded, he just talks about um money. Well, if the market cannot um address the uh problems, then control must be imposed. We used to have control over rice even. But uh in order to resolve this issue, I won't ask you to impose rental control. Mister Paul Che talks about some problems, oh, of course, in the past, we had squatters, uh squatter houses, uh squatter huts. Um, is it what you would like to see? That people live in squatter huts? Now, I have a question for you. Mister Kwok Wai Kung asked you about H O S units and you said that there aren't enough sites for more production. Now, uh many sites are being hoarded by developers in Hong Kong, they're waiting for the land uses to be changed. I have, I've asked you this question before, can you ask C Y Lang to impose a restriction so that for um land hoarded and land use, change in land use hasn't been applied for, these sites can be taken back? Have you discussed with C Y Lang? Will you let Secretary reply to you?
Secretary, land policy and on land use, this is not under the purview of the Secretary for Transport and Housing. But this, you come from the same government. Uh, I will definitely reflect Mister Lan Kwong's view to other government bureaus. Please allow Secretary to finish on uh land management. We need to consider different factors. Um ti- land title, ownership, um planning aspect. And thirdly, how the government deals with the relationship with the private sector. It's, so there are a number of issues, but on the whole, land resources are valuable, we uh must optimize land resources. We must not uh let uh those sites left idle. Well, you build infield buil- buildings, so these are actually um w- wall effect buildings. For the grassroots, they live in wall effect buildings. For um developers, they just hoard uh up land. So um what does C Y Lang mean when he says that they want people to have better living environment? There are lots of sites that can be taken back. Your time is up, next member. Mister Eleanor, thank you, Chairman. Subdivided units. Now, whether it should be regulated by way of licensing or other means, the L T H S Steering Committee's report hasn't made any recommendation. And that's the same for rental control. My question for the Secretary is this. You have been talking to S D U tenants. You may know that um owners of subdivided units sometimes may uh sell um water and electricity, so to speak. And that is, the landlord will pay for the water charges and electricity bills and then charge them by the meter. So for subdivided unit tenants, uh on the one hand, they need to be careful about the use of electricity. On the other hand, the um S D U landlord would actually force them to use more electricity as this will help them make a better, uh bigger profit. So have you considered this issue, whether it is uh legal to sell electricity in such a manner? Does the government have a position? If it does, can you tell us? Because this can help alleviate the burden of S D U tenants. On rental control in twenty oh three, rental control was abolished at the time, uh in the council debate, there were concerns expressed over grassroots. That is, they um not, they were not given any tenancy protection. And they have no security of tenure. And the, at that time, the government said that there were different forms of protection, there were interim housing, et cetera. And it's been uh ten years and the safety net is now gone. And some tenants just fall uh below the safety net. For S D U tenants and grassroots, they understand. And the community is not asking for a comprehensive re- introduction of rental control. However, have you considered imposing rental control on certain forms of housing? For example, for a units with a ratable value or um lower than a certain amount, will rental control be imposed? Or will any restriction on the um tenancy period be imposed? Secretary. Uh, some concerned groups have expressed to me on subdivided units. The problem with uh water and electricity, as Mister Eleanor mentioned. Now, but if the electricity meter belongs to the landlord and the flat is submitted to the S U tenants, then it's their arrangement, uh so how um electricity and water uh is to be paid. But on the specific details, if the government is to regulate S D U's by licensing or by registration, it's difficult. There are, um, of course, the government can take enforcement action on the fire safety regulations, et cetera. As to registration or licensing, I think this issue is still controversial in the community. On rental control, as I replied to other members, there are issues to be rationalized, there are things to make, to be made clear. Uh, we don't have time for this discussion in detail here. But later on, at a panel on meeting, panel on housing meeting, I will um give you more details. Next, Mister Frederick Fong, start here. So on to second round, three minutes, Mister Wong Khoong.
Thank you, Chairman. The question for the Secretary. The long-term housing strategy has been formulated, the Steering Committee has completed its report. So uh the matter has come to an end, however, if this um committee is permanently abolished and the secretariat support uh is suspended and staff redeployed, I don't think this is appropriate. Because housing housing issues may change uh because of um changes in supply and demand in the market and other issues. So will you consider keeping the Long-Term Housing Strategy Committee with uh contin- continuous secretariat support so that they can regularly review the long-term housing strategy of the administration? Over the past decade, um the long-term housing strategy was suspended.
Secretary, uh actually, the L T H S Steering Committee has completed its work. It issued a consultation paper setting out the recommendations and observations on housing issues. And they completed the three-month consultation period and submitted a recommend, uh a report. So their work uh is finished. The next step is for the administration to formulate the formal long-term housing strategy, ha- having considered the views from the community and their report. In the, uh towards the end of the nineteen nineties, that was the arrangement concerning the L T H S. So there won't be any task force on L T H S, so to speak, and L E C O will be monitoring the L T H S to be announced uh later. And uh there is uh no starving uh need for uh the there is no need to have a secretariat to support the L T H S, but there will be a dedicated team to follow up on the implementation of the various recommendations and measures put forward by the L T H S Steering Committee. Chairman, my response is, of course, L E C O will monitor the government. But the government do things very, uh does things very clearly. Without this program, without this headline, there won't be any funding and staff support. Without this L T H S Steering Committee and the relevant secretariat, um there will be nobody doing this job, just like abolishing the H O S in the past. Uh Chairman, this won't happen. The L T H S formulated by the government, including the total housing supply target of four hundred and seventy thousand, um including two hundred thousand for PRH or two hundred and eighty thousand for public housing, these have been announced in advance. Of course, I cannot say in advance what the government will announce because we're still in the process of formulating the L T H S. But once decisions are made, then under the system, uh we need to deploy staff for the purpose.
Going back to first round, Miss Chen Yun Han. Thank you, Mister Chairman. I am rather confused by the housing policy of the government recently. Now, you're a professor, you should talk about logic and I'm looking at um some figures. In the C E's election and in your Long-Term Housing Strategy Report, uh you have made it clear that um the housing supply, housing split should be sixty percent, forty percent. F T U is asked for seventy percent, thirty percent, but okay, you say sixty percent, forty percent, we will accept it for now. But then, it seems that um the government's being played around by real estate developers. Why do I say that, like for Hong Kong land for Hong Kong people? Even for H O S, you cannot achieve your production targets. So how can you tell us you're going towards the split of sixty, forty? Could the secretary say elaborate? In Singapore, for example, they have a policy, Singapore land for Singaporeans. And they have set um ratio of public sector housing and they will move towards the target. In Hong Kong, we fail because we have not a long-term housing strategy. So i- in the past, um Singapore learned from us in housing policies. But now we have to learn from them and we're setting a split of sixty forty. But in the past two years, you seem to be going around in circles. Now, you are professor, you are secretary. How do you look at government policies now? Hong Kong land for Hong Kong people. No, I'm not just talking about Hong Kong land for Hong Kong people. I'm talking about we are not moving towards the split of sixty forty. When I reply to Mr. Kowai Kong, I explained that in the next decade, it's still our target to build eighty thousand H O S units. We that's been made public. But of course, the next few years, we cannot speed up production. Professor, you know my concern. The C E pledged that there would be a split and now you've set a target. I'm worried that you might have to go back on your target because you can't even achieve the current production target. The secretary is trying to answer your question, but I'm just trying to make um you know save time. Now, when we look for land, of course, it will depend on the district. There will be constraints there and there may be pl- zoning restrictions as well. And we we find a site on the map, uh this is possible for building H O S. But when it actually about turning the site into that purpose, could we do it quickly? Of course, we just have to try our best. Also, we may um now for the new split sixty forty that spread out in the policy address this year. Is the government policy, it will not change. Chairman, well, that's what the secretary said, even the C said so before. But how can you assure Hong Kong people? How can we trust you in this policy? Because um developers play you and then you everything comes to halt. So how can you still confidence in us? You still cannot achieve the current H O S production target now. So how could you um give us confidence? How can you keep to the split of sixty forty so that grassroots could have their hu- homes? But when they build the units, then you have confidence. Maybe you you think my my question is totally unnecessary, but I'm just saying that you are switching between policies. Sometimes I was asked questions by at the residents' meeting and I was dumbfounded. Because I wouldn't be sure whether this is um uh a gen- genuine policy or not. Secretary, all I can say is that we will move towards this target and we'll try our best. Because when it comes to housing production, it's not just that we commit to so many units and then the units will be available tomorrow. It takes time. We're building some units now. Um but then they may be affected by the planning decisions made several years ago. And then recently, we have made adjustments to our policy and our targets. So by the time these units are actually built, it will take several years. So that's inevitable. When it comes to housing issue, that's something we have to accept. But in moving towards this target, we are not going to spare any effort. The time is up. Um even for the next five years or the second five years of the tenure period, we are already starting our groundwork now. Next, Mr. Frederick Feng, also first round.
I want to talk about redevelopment of housing estates. There there's no announcement on redevelopment plans. I'm really disappointed. I think the government's being short-sighted. You know, it seems that um you won't do anything until the matter becomes urgent. Because you have a term, four, five years, so that's it. You just want to finish the term. And civil servants are not accountable or principal officials, of course, they it's not their responsibility. But how can there not be a redevelopment program for public housing estates? Because buildings will collapse after seventy, eighty years or whatever. So there is a time, there must be a time frame for redevelopment housing estates. That's my first point. Second point. There are some low um housing blocks. In Shangshapu, there are some ten estates sold. The the lower blocks. And then they could be redeveloped, so you you could boost the number of P R H units. You could build double the units, actually. But only some um estates, um you know, some twenty-two estates will be considered for redevelopment. I don't know why it takes you so long to consider that. In situ rehousing, twenty-two estates, they are distributed in different districts. So you don't have to start all twenty-two estates at the same time. Whenever one estate is ready, you can start redevelopment. For example, in Shangshapu, there are over ten thousand units in the coming uh coming on stream in the five next five years. You just take Nan Shan Estate or Shaqimai Estate, that's enough for you to provide rehousing. And you can start redevelopment in those areas. For example, Pakting Estate, you've started redevelopment. For the last phase um of Pakting Estate, there'll be units vacated and this could be used for rehousing purpose, for redevelopment. Wong Tai Shin Estate, Chai Hong Estate, next to Chai Hong Estate, Tai Ham Estate, Tai Ham Village has been demolished. So there's an empty site there. You could just use that site for public rental housing units. And then you there could be a reception estate for Chai Hong Estate. And Kun Tong Warlock Estate, they're on your list. Warlock Estate and in Al Tao Kock Estate, there were one block nearing completion. So you you have two phases of redevelopment in Warlock Estate, then the new Al Tao Kock block could be used for rehousing. So I can point out to you, uh for the twenty-two estates, um free uh if for some of them in three districts. You could start redevelopment right away. What are you still pondering about?
Secretary, as I said in opening remarks, we cannot embark on too many redevelopment projects at any one time. Now, it's not just about building a new estate. Um when it comes to planning redevelopment, it takes time and and manpower to have discussions with stakeholders. And if we have too many redevelopment projects happening at the same time, that means we'll be freezing a lot of the newly built units. What about those on the waiting list? Where do we find units for them? So we have to strike a balance, but that doesn't mean that we won't do redevelopment. It's true, as Mr. Feng pointed out, we do have to do redevelopment. That's why we need to do ongoing assessment. But then we can't just say that there will be um comprehensive redevelopment. We have to look at individual projects. The secretary hasn't answered my question. Redevelopment is nothing new. From the nineteen seventies to uh about five years ago, you stopped redevelopment. And North Point Estate was the last redevelopment project. You are very experienced in the world, not just in Hong Kong. And yet you're telling me you still have to consider how you go about redevelopment. Now, i- if you don't want embark on large-scale redevelopment, you could start with at least one or two districts, Wong Tai Shin or Kun Tong first. But you have come to complete halt. That's irresponsible. You you could make this make a proposal to the government. I have, but they ignore me. Okay, there are two more in the second round and then I'll wrap up this session. Mrs. Xin Chung Kai, second round.
Mr. Chairman, I still want to talk about the Wafu Estate redevelopment. I heard the secretary said say that there won't be a five-month rolling program. Okay, I've got that. For the twenty-two estates, you haven't made formal announcement on the redevelopment. I get that. In the policy address, there's only mention of redeveloping the Wafu Estate. But but what is the exact status now? The C E has pledged solemnly there would be redevelopment. And then in paragraph eight of your opening remarks, it said usually it would be three years before the actual redevelopment. So when do residents expect to move? What is the arrangement? Do you have any details to share, Secretary? In the past, there was a five-year rolling program. And once the estate is included in program, then people will start applying for trawling or buying H O S and so on. So all the arrangements will fall into place. But now, it seems that you haven't start uh it it's not yet in the formal three-year cycle. Before, it was five years. Now it's three years. But what exactly is the status? So um residents could rest assured. Mr. Chairman, for Wafu Estate, we have named Wafu Estate, as some members pointed out, because the residents have some form of expectation. Now, for Wafu Estate, there are some adjoining sites or nearby sites that could be used for building P R H units. That's why we could provide trawling units. And for Wafu Estate, uh it's true, after careful assessment, there's need for redevelopment. And redevelopment would also bring about additional units as a benefit. But we're still doing some technical studies. We have to complete all the technical studies before we could propose a timetable. Without a timetable um on the part of the actually, how are we going to tell the residents there what the exact arrangement is? Of course, people residents are concerned. We could appreciate that. But without um clear timeframe, we don't want to start consultation so rashly. Uh perhaps um Ms. Ada Feng could supplement on the studies? Ms. Feng.
Now, in Parkful um South, there are five um lots. Um north uh to Wafu Estate, Chi Fu Street and so on. These sites could be used for um public housing development and for trawling purpose. We are now carrying out studies on these five sites. These um five sites will provide trawling units and new units. There will also be additional community facilities. And after we've completed all the studies, uh we may have to apply for rezoning of of the land use and so on. And then we will um come up with a timeframe based on the number of units um to be produced in each site. And then we'll see which um units in Wafu Estates will be redeveloped first and which units will be uh vacated first. And then we will consult the residents and nearby stakeholders. Thank you. Next, Ms. Chen Yuen Han, second round. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You are very experienced of housing issues. Uh you have much experience in redevelopment. You know, Chi Wan San Estate was uh redeveloped, so the government is very experienced in redevelopment. Now, in Hammer Hill Estate, you want to build some more units there. There's some discussion now. Why don't you redevelop Chai Hong and Warlock Estate? The building density is so low, there's there are plenty of sites nearby for more development. So I think you have to be more determined in um. I don't know what you're worried about. What are the constraints, really? I I don't get it. You know, sometimes it's frustrating. That's why I was trying to um force the secretary to give an undertaking. You can't just say, take my word for it. No, that's not good enough. Maybe you keep some um changing of policies. And maybe you say that because property prices are lower now, then you won't build more P R H units. Now, you have all sort of data and then you should move firmly towards your ultimate target. You mustn't sway your position. Now, anyway, that's not my point. What about people who just miss the limits? And so they they have to wait a long time for P R H. Why and then they and then they have to rent private properties. Why can't you impose rent control? Because rentals are so high now. On the question of rent control, would you consider it? Are you still being conservative? You would just keep doing more studies?
Secretary, when I replied to other questions, I said that the government has reservation about rent control. Because we're worried that the measures could be counterproductive. But I agree, in the community, there is a strong demand for rent control. At the same time, there is strong opposition against rent control. This is not an issue we could evade, so we need to do some analysis. So that's what we're going to do. And I understand the housing panel will discuss the matter later on. The LECO has also asked this research unit to prepare some information. So I think we have to look at all the pros and cons of the measure. Do you have um timeframe, you know, or work schedule? Because those who are suffering high rentals are waiting for an answer from you. Do you have a timeframe? Now, I don't want the public to think that we are proceeding with rent control now. Because we're concerned about um various aspects. We haven't yet even explored the pros and cons of the measuring full. Maybe before we even do that, maybe there will be changes in the market and landlords may start picking tenants. We don't want to see that. I think that's all. Um as I said, we'll use up the last minute of the session. So we'll take a short break. Next session will be on transport after ten minutes.